Everyone, welcome to the 2021-2022 school year on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Like Phil said, I am the Board President and was elected at the end of the year last year. And I'm serving right behind Erin Wright, who served us for many years on the board. So joined in leadership by Ammar, David, and Mikla Webb. We make up the Executive Committee of the Board. And we have several returning members this year, including Emily Ellis, Lane Sergu, Kristin Stevens, and Tim Smith. The rest of the members are joining us new this year. We've got Robin Morton, Mark Tyoxen, Julia Sukat, Sukat. Let's see, Krish Chahada, Stephanie Hagan, and then Jillian Eugene, who's actually a Waldorf alumni. So it's our first time on the Waldorf School of Atlanta's Board of Trustees to have a student alumni join us. And we're really, really honored to have her. So and look forward to the year ahead and being of service to the school.
Thanks, Tessa. We want to look at a couple of what we want to get out of the town hall meeting today. Really want to look at the health and safety protocols and go with them with everyone. As Abby mentioned earlier, these protocols were designed to keep everyone safe here at school. We're lucky, we had a year of experience doing this in a sense that many schools this year are going back to school for the first time and don't have the experience that we had last year. And also very fortunate to have two, well, two great health advisors that worked with us on these protocols. And then also talk a little bit about the instruction for the school year and provide some details of that indoor and outdoor. And then at the end, there'll be time for questions. And just to remind everybody, if you have any questions, put them in the chat room. Anne Marie and Sharon will collate them for us and we'll answer them at the end of the presentation. So some of the guiding principles that we're dealing with are making in-person learning possible. I mean, from the start, March 12th, 2019, when this whole thing started, this pandemic started, we quickly put together a COVID task planning force where we had some community members. Some of them are present here today. Thank you, Eric Crumberg, and others who helped us really imagine what we could do in terms of what do we need to do to get our, keep our school, put it in a place where we can have in-person learning with a lot of creativity and ingenuity and just hard work from everybody in the community. You know, the idea of outdoor classrooms were born. So in-person learning, and I just mentioned that because that is such a strong ethos of the school. And that was always a guiding principle and still is. And then, of course, with that, we, you know, optimizing our safety protocols. It's definitely one of the biggest guiding principles. We want everybody to stay safe while maintaining the efficacy of education and having practices that are sustainable. Having a practice that we can't sustain doesn't work for anyone. So those are our guiding principles and what guides us in terms of our protocols and everything stepping into this year. We had great success last year. We felt huge success. It was such a community effort and a community commitment that occurred. And we're really ready to build upon that. We've learned a lot, as Abby said earlier, and what, you know, what to do to provide safe in-person education. That's, you know, what everybody wants. But it requires this continued success, requires a collective community responsibility. Much like last year, when we asked everybody to join forces with us and lean into this. We're asking you this year also, whether it's, you know, adhering to our protocols of distancing, wearing masks, everything that we put in place and just a real commitment by everyone to do their part. And one of the most enjoyable things of my whole career really was last year. It was hard, probably the hardest year, but probably one of the most enjoyable in the sense of just, just a great, great show of community teamwork. So I'll walk through just kind of a general plan or overview that will enable us to stay here on campus. And we do have, we start on August 18th, as you all know. We'll outline these protocols, the protocols, but they also will be up on our website in our health and safety plan. We still have outdoor learning spaces, our fabulous campus. And the schedules and spaces that we have are, you know, designed, configured to allow students to remain outside for as much of the day as possible, much like last year. There will be, there'll be times when we have to go inside, obviously, and teachers will be able to have discretion with that. But when we do go inside, as many of you know, those that are out there that are returning, we have indoor ventilation that's been enhanced. And we've also, we, you know, last year redesigned the dismissal and arrival procedures just so it would allow for more physical distancing. So nobody, so not, the whole campus isn't arriving at once in one place. So it's kind of the general overview. And I'll turn it over to Abby and she's talked a little bit about some program modifications.
Yeah, so probably besides moving outside last year, the biggest change that we saw in the grades was to the schedule. And we're changing that up again this year, but not going back completely to the way it was. So this year, our pods are being relaxed. We're going to have rotating blocks of specialty classes, but the blocks will be longer and there will be more classes in a block. So this time, the groupings will be grades one through four and grades five through eight. In addition to the blocks getting longer and more classes in a block, some classes will continue to meet throughout the year and won't be on that on and off rotation. So gardening, strings, and woodworking classes will meet throughout the year for all the grades that have them. And in addition to that, middle schoolers will have some math and Spanish even when they're in a block that's off from math and Spanish. Or sorry, off from Spanish, they don't really have any off math blocks. One of the reasons we're doing this is that the question of the weekly schedule and balancing the specialty classes has been living very strongly in our faculty for many years now. Just how do we create the healthiest possible balance for our students? And we saw last year some of the benefits of the pods that we had in place and are just trying out something a little different this year to see what benefits we see there and what we might want to change still in the future. One of the things to really point out about this schedule is that because of the longer periods and because students will have their on classes more times during the week than they would if it were throughout the year, the students really only end up with about four periods fewer worth of instructional time. So it's a very slight difference in the amount of time they have in each class in this rotating system versus having the same schedule every week throughout the year. So yeah, we're, we're giving it a try this year. We're trying to capture the benefits that we saw last year and mitigate some of the downsides and we'll see what we think. So that's the, I would say that's the largest shift that we're making from last year to this year. In addition to that, the students will resume having recess on shared playyards. So again, with the pods relaxing, we're able to have a bit more of a mixed recess. And this year, students who are home due to illness, quarantine, family circumstance, anything COVID-related will receive lesson materials for their, from their class teacher and their specialty teachers. However, we will only be offering remote instruction to middle school students and that on a limited basis and really only for people who are home for COVID or quarantine or other approved reasons. So that's something that if it's needed in your family, you'll let me know, we'll talk about it and work out how to do it, remote instruction in those cases. As we look to the classroom environment outside, we'll continue with the tents. They've been great, they're covered, they're well-ventilated, they're tucked all over the school grounds, and they've just been amazing classrooms last year. We'll carry on with the outdoor bathrooms, hand washing stations, and water bottle, water bottle filling stations. And we'll continue to regularly spray the school grounds for mosquitoes in an eco-friendly way. So all those just kind of help mitigate the hardships that come from being outside. Also outside, just, we were super successful last year. The tents were very, very popular. Teachers will continue to use wireless microphones as they need to. And some of the challenges that we had with the tents involving drainage in the low-lying tents and the slope of the ground in the higher tents have been addressed this summer as well. We also added a kindergarten learning space for Miss Penn's class. So yeah, we've just been expanding and improving our outdoor classrooms. When it comes inside, as Phil said, we're going to be a little more flexible this year in terms of the teacher's ability to decide due to inclement weather, due to class need to move inside. And we've got a lot of things in place to help keep that as safe as possible as well. We've got enhanced ventilation in the classrooms through mounted two-way fans to increase air exchange. We've got enhanced air filtration with HEPA filters in the ed building in the sanctuary and with the Q fresh system in the kindergarten classrooms in the two other buildings that we have. Desks will continue to be spaced as much as possible in the classes, but we did opt this year to keep classes in a single classroom. So given that we have three, three options in place or three, three strategies in place to mitigate the transmission of the disease. So we have masking, distancing, and increased ventilation. Our health advisors felt that as long as we have the increased ventilation and the masking in place indoors, we can be a little more flexible with the distancing so that we don't have to split classes and try to have a single lesson happening in two different classrooms. So I mentioned masking and yes, students and teachers will wear masks while indoors. And we'll continue to have bathrooms have a limited capacity. And there's just a lovely picture of our classroom. So even when we're physically distanced, the curiosity and free thinking and the things that we share bring us together. Here's a look at the schedule. So we're delighted to offer full-day learning most of the days this year. We have expanded the early dismissal day to include all the grades. So where before COVID, only grades one through five dismissed at one o'clock on Thursday. Now, as we return to full-day instruction, all the grades one through eight will dismiss early on Thursday. You can take a look here, the morning schedule looks pretty much the same as it did last year. And the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday schedule is similar to the long days last year. We are going to continue with the staggered dismissal times, but we're only staggering them by 10 minutes this year. So dismissal on the long days will be at 2:50 for the younger students for grades one through five. No, Phil, can you correct me? I think it's one through.
One through four. One through four, yes.
Yeah, thanks. And then it will be at three o'clock for grades five through eight. And similarly, on Thursday, grades one through four will dismiss at the earlier time, one o'clock, and grades five through eight will dismiss at the later time, 1:10. We will offer morning care and extended day this year. They'll follow the same health and safety protocols that we follow typically at school. Extended day is going to be grouped into early childhood, grades one through five, and middle school. And it'll be offered until 6:00 PM if needed. We're working on getting some of the extended day and after-school activities back in place. So we will have some activities for the lower grades and some middle school sports offered for our students this year. And then, as I said before about remote learning, we will not be offering a remote option for children through grade five. And we'll be offering limited remote instruction for middle school students only for absences required if a student has to quarantine or isolate due to a COVID test symptoms or exposure. And then just kind of looking over the whole calendar for the year, some big annual events that we wanted to touch on here. First of all, the All School Work Day isn't a single big day this year as it has been many years past, but it's been ongoing throughout the summer. And I want to especially highlight that there are still opportunities to participate. So you may have heard from your child's teacher about particular days that they'd like you to be on campus, that they might be here and you can help them out, but there are also needs across the campus. So really, anytime that you can spare for us, we would love to have your help preparing our indoor and our outdoor spaces. So for the next two weeks, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Ally Del Pino, our facilities manager, will be coordinating volunteer help in the morning. So anytime that you're available to offer for that would be much appreciated and well-used. The new parent orientation that we typically have, that we would typically have the Monday before school starts, will be held on Zoom. Parent evenings, we're still kind of looking to see what might be possible. Hopefully, we'll be able to have them in person outside, but we just want to read the cards a little more before we give a final answer about that. Micklemus, again, still to be determined, but we're looking at having it outside the same way that we did last year. Lantern Walk, similarly, to be determined, possible outside. Parent-teacher conferences, it's possible that we can offer in-person and remote options. Again, as we get more toward October, we'll be able to have more details with that. The Holiday Fair, we may try to offer a modified all-outdoor version, still to be determined. Winter Spiral, we're looking at having it outside again as we did. And at this time, we're planning for class plays to be offered outside. And then all of our assembly plans right now are to hold it for students-only outdoors and with distance between the classes. So that's just kind of a picture of some highlights of the year. And so with that more detailed picture about life in the grades, I'm going to turn it over to Phil to share some of our protocols that are applied across the whole school. Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, thank you, Abby. I'm going to talk about the health and safety protocols for the coming year. And when we talk, and these are really for, they're vaccination-neutral, for whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated. These are the things that keep us safe. And the big three are obviously ventilation, distancing, and masking. So we do, as we mentioned earlier, classes will spend majority of the day outside. But when they do have to go inside, we have enhanced ventilation, it's safe inside. And we know that, we know that from, you know, because of the protocols we have in place, that is, even though our plan is to stay outside majority of the day, when we do have to go inside because of inclement weather, we know everybody will be safe inside. Because of the distancing, one aspect in our classrooms and our outdoor learning spaces are configured to maximize our space between desks. We do, we are limiting the intermingling of classes. We're not eliminating that. Obviously, we are, one of the things this year, we're, there are going to be more shared recess spaces. So there will be some intermingling of classes. Our assemblies on campus that we have will be students-only outside and with distance between the classes, much like we did last year. Again, we talked about the drop-off times, allowing for distancing. We are restricting non-essential visitors on campus during the day. Anytime, though, you are on campus or we have any visitors, they should plan to distance themselves when they're here. And we are looking at, just to let everybody know, we are looking at having some small evening gatherings of parents within a class. That may be possible. And we, we are open to that and putting in parameters for that to take place. Okay, so it's more health and safety protocols. Of course, masking is going to be a big piece of it, as I mentioned, one of the big three. So masking is going to be worn by all students and teachers when we're indoors, anytime we're indoors. The only exception, I guess, exception to that, if, when the grades teachers, these are grades one through eight, may remove their mask for distance instruction in front of the class if they're able to maintain the six-foot distancing. So this is, because of the instructional nature of the class, and if there's that distance between the teacher and the students, the six-foot distancing, it is safe. Outside masks are optional, that's, that's a big change from last year. Most of the data and research points that you're outside, it's very safe, very unlikely that there would be any transmission. And so that's why we have a mask outside optional. Of course, we're going to keep up with the hand washing and the other hygienic practices. Mentioned before, the outdoor instruction is our preferred place of instruction. But classes may have to move inside at points in the day to support learning comfort, which means if you're in the middle of a storm, it's not safe to be outside, obviously. Or if the, you know, it's just so oppressive heat late in the day, there may be more of going in, coming back out throughout the day, depending on temperature. Teachers will have that discretion to do that this year. It's a little bit more flexible that way. As such, we won't, in the past, like last year, we sent a school-wide communication when everybody went in classes indoors. This year, we will not be doing that. And I will say, if that's a concern, just talk to your, your classroom teacher about that. And some other protocols, things you need to be aware of. We ask you again, you know, monitor your children's symptoms and monitor for any infection. And I'll go through the symptom chart in a minute, but that's, that's ahead of the symptom chart is, you know, making sure your children's, your child is not exhibiting any symptoms before they come to school. One of the other things is, the thing that we're recommending, and this is based on our health experts and advisor, Snigden Reina, the idea of keeping at-home tests on hand in case of symptoms. They are much more effective now. So they're, they're rapid tests. You can administer them and get the results back in 15 minutes. And again, we're, we ask our staff, our staff or faculty, students, if you're feeling ill, really a low threshold here. Don't come to school. One of the things to support this, last year, and we're continuing, this year's a policy change of, you know, giving staff, faculty, and then time off if, if it's COVID-related. Doesn't make sense to ask them not to come when they have symptoms and penalize them by missing a day. So that, that policy change will, will stay this year. Again, I mentioned before, just having a low threshold to keep your child at home if they're not feeling well. Again, this goes back to the community effort, just, last year was a fabulous, fabulous success story and we want to continue that. That's going, everybody, we need everybody to do their part with it, as we mentioned earlier. So I'll just walk through some protocols and this is more text-heavy, and I'll show you the charts in a minute. But what happens if community members exposed with someone that has COVID? And this is where the new guidelines do distinguish between vaccinated, unvaccinated individuals. If you're exposed to someone with COVID, an exposure is defined as, you know, six feet, 15 minutes or more, within six feet, six feet or within, for 15 minutes or more. So if they're vaccinated, say your child is exposed, if he or she is vaccinated, they don't need to quarantine after being exposed to COVID. However, they will need to get tested three to five days after the exposure. And again, if, if symptoms of COVID develop within 14 days. So that's a shift. For unvaccinated individuals who are exposed, this is the same guidance as last year. They'll, they'll need to quarantine for seven days. Test for COVID as soon as symptoms develop. And if, obviously, if no symptoms develop, then they test five to seven days after their last exposure. So that's a distinction there between vaccinated and vaccinated. If the test result, test results are positive, then they have to, they have to isolate for 10-day isolation. If it's negative, this is for unvaccinated individuals, if it's negative for seven days, they can return to school after seven days. So if there is a confirmed case, what happens? Well, obviously, the, the person that is, has COVID will have to isolate for 10 days from the symptom onset or a positive test date. And then can return after, if, if the resolution of symptoms has been 24 hours. So it's, that's the same as the end of last year. Obviously, disinfect and clean the area that the person is operating in and then identifying contacts that that person may have had. I'll say contact anyone within six feet, more than 15 minutes. So the, I'll just show you the symptom, the charts we have to reflect all this. And this will be up on our website and also we'll send it out in our community letters. And I'll probably send it out many times throughout the year. If you have any questions, you can always contact me about this. But I don't know that I want to walk through everything. I think what, I mean, I just, basically what this chart is, this expressed in what I just said. But just to give you a general overview of it. At the top, in the blue, you'll see under, this is, if your child wakes up with symptoms, what do we do? And that's what the chart walks you through this. Again, in the blue, it says monitor for symptoms of COVID daily, and we're asking everybody to do that. On the left, there's low-risk symptoms, on the right, there's high-risk symptoms. And that really determines if there's engagement in testing. If you have two or more low-risk symptoms, that kind of, that engages a testing protocol where you should get, you should get your child tested. High-risk symptoms, if there's one high-risk symptom, that, that engages the testing protocol. And as I mentioned before, one of the, one of the changes, and I don't know if I did mention this before, but one of the changes this year, the rapid home testing. We're recommending that you can use that this year. As I did, I think I did say this, but our, and you can get them at Walmart, you can get them at any local pharmacy. One of, just one of the recommendations, and again, this is not a product plug, but one that we know of is the Binax now, and I know Walmart has those. And their rapid testing, you can find out in 15 minutes. So those are easy to use and accessible. Again, this, that chart and all these other charts will be sent out to you and, and will be on our website. So what happens if a person is exposed, there's a known COVID exposure? So what happens if a person is exposed, there's a known COVID exposure? Again, the delineation between vaccinated or unvaccinated individuals is different. If you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine. Poweries do need to get tested three to five days after exposure. And then, of course, if symptoms of COVID develop within 14 days, unvaccinated individuals do have to quarantine. And get tested. And if it's negative, then come back after seven days, if it's positive, then of course, 10 day isolation period will start. And then, the last chart I have to share, share is confirmed. If there's a confirmed infection, again, this just walks you through in a chart form. What I just explained, and I'm not going to walk through it individually. However, just be aware of it and all these, all these charts will be put out to you through Parent Square and also will be on our website. And of course, if you ever have any questions about them, please call me, you can contact me. I walk many parents, last year I had to walk many parents to these charts if their child was sick. We, in the morning, every morning, if, once we get the attendance and we will follow, we follow up with, with parents and about why their child is sick, what are their symptoms? And I've walked many people through these charts and we'll continue to do that. And important, important thing really with all this is just please monitor your child's symptoms. And like I said, a very low threshold for sending them to school. Okay, I think we can tackle some questions now. So I'll let Sharon and Anne Marie, if you guys have some questions you've collated.
Okay, so looking at some of the questions.
The first one is if we're going to have an assembly outside on the first day.
Yes, our current plan is to have an assembly outside for the students only. And the, the classes will be separated by grades. So unfortunately, parents are not invited to our opening assembly, but the students will gather together outside.
The next question is regarding families that have children in both lower grades and upper grades. A question about pickup, did they pick up at one time versus the other?
If you are coming to pick up children in both lower grades and upper grades, our recommendation is that you come at the very beginning of the later time.
All right. Another question is, oh, I had it and then I lost it.
I have one actually here, Abby, it says, let's see. Having all specialties throughout the week seems more beneficial to the students instead of having to build momentum all over again. It seems that weekly classes can be built upon all, all year long and is much more in keeping with a true Waldorf curriculum and experience.
So, yeah, we weighed a lot of factors as we were deciding whether to return to the consistent weekly schedule or to keep working with the longer periods and more concentrated time in the specialty classes. There are upsides and downsides to both ways. The weekly schedule as it was, was especially intense for the middle school students. And so, again, we're just given the opportunity to try something new that presented itself last year. We're trying to take what we learned from last year, bring the best parts of that and see what we think about how it works this year. We're certainly not committed to continuing this forever, but just want to continue to try things. Try to find the best in what we, the best of what we've experienced last year and continually learn about the best ways to serve our students. We did make a conscious choice this year to carry some classes throughout the year. And it was done in a lot of conversation with all of the specialty teachers to try to see which ones would benefit the most from being spread throughout the year and which would benefit the most from happening in more concentrated blocks.
All right, there's a question about the minimum and maximum temperatures for remaining outside. And will the temperatures outside be monitored as the year unfolds?
So I don't think we're going to tie it to a particular temperature. As we all know, living in Georgia, the same temperature can feel very differently depending on humidity and other factors. So one of the main tenants of being a Waldorf teacher is observation of the children that you're teaching. And that practice of observation is going to be what mainly serves us in determining whether to stay outside or go inside. So the teachers will be out there with the students, they'll be experiencing the weather themselves and observing how the weather is affecting the children. And we're very thankful that we have a little more flexibility this year to respond to those weather conditions and move inside if the children's responsiveness warrants that.
Okay, great. There's also a question about the dress code, and the dress code will be provided in the family handbook. Also, probably it's going to be reviewed at the new family orientation.
Right, yeah, so Anne Marie is brushing up the finishing touches on the family handbook. These last moments here, and it will be available on the website very soon now. In the meantime, if you have particular questions, I encourage you to reach out to your class teacher.
What sports, if any, will be offered this year?
Currently on the docket for the fall are ultimate frisbee, which is coed, and boys' and girls' basketball. For the spring, we're still not sure, we're going to see what, what the landscape is as we look in the spring.
Okay, here's one about the information about in-home tests, where to buy and any that are recommended.
Yeah, the, I mean, this is one brand, Binax Now, is the name of it. Thank you, Anne Marie, if you look at Anne Marie's. And that, I know you can get that Walmart, I bought from at Walmart, almost any pharmacy will have them.
Yeah, and I'll just share, I had a bit of an allergy situation earlier this week and had the opportunity to try one of the rapid at-home tests. And it was super easy, really quick, I got it at CVS. It was like a little under $25 for a pack of two, so have one at home in case I get a runny nose again. But yeah, it was easy to use, it was very nice to be in control of my own nasal swab to do it.
There's a question about why vaccinated individuals who have been exposed don't need to follow the same quarantine guidelines as unvaccinated individuals?
That's a great question, and those are the guidelines that the CDC have put out. I'll say that, so that may change, I don't know. But currently, that's what their guidelines are. Personally, I don't know the, the research and medicine behind it. However, I mean, all our protocols here on campus are designed to protect everybody. And we like, we would like to believe that even if someone comes on campus that is, that has is COVID, has COVID positive, everyone else would be protected with our protocols in place. And I think, you know, hopefully that will continue to be the case moving forward this year. But we're, we're constantly monitoring, you know, CDC, we also, our protocols, besides our two health experts, we're monitoring other schools and what the situation is with, through different professional associations. So all these things go into, to keep an eye on, you know, do we need to adjust our protocols at any minute? And as you know, more than likely, we will have to do that sometimes throughout the school year as this pandemic shifts.
Okay, here's one about the Thursday dismissal change, which is middle school getting out at one, is that going to be permanent or is it just unique to this year?
We're going year by year right now. Yeah, I, I wouldn't take this year's decision as an indication of what next year will be like, one way or the other, sorry.
And the last question for Abby is, where is the extended day program? And could you talk about where someone who is interested in that program might get more details about it?
Sure, so the extended day program happens outdoors as well. So it's been on our upper play yard this past year, it's run by Lisa Novak. And so she can tell you every little nitty gritty detail about it. If you want more of an overview of the program and the cost and the details of signing up, our business manager, Latonya, would be the person to contact to get more details about it. And you can reach her at finance@waldorfatlanta.org.
All right, I do not see any other questions in the chat, how about you, Anne Marie?
I don't. I think that's a wrap for the questions and.
Well, thanks for coming, everyone. We look, we look forward to school year, hope you're excited as we are. And just glad you guys showed up today. It was nice to see and read everybody, all these familiar faces out there. And also, special welcome to all the new families to Waldorf. And I look forward to getting to know you a little bit better throughout the year. So thanks for being here, enjoy the rest of the, the short summer that we have left. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Do you want to end the recording, Phil?
Yeah, always forget that, thank you.